All right, you ready?
Yep.
All right. Before the committee meeting order, I'm going to have to flag John Essman. It's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bane Shaw.
Here.
Dr. Del Mary.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey. Mrs. Lane. Mr. Van Archick.
Here.
Mr. Venkis.
Here.
Ms. Dussman.
Here.
And Ms. Wood.
Here.
We have any visitors who would like to sign in, comments from any visitors. Come to the microphone. Announced that we had executive sessions, we had two of them for personnel and contract negotiations. One was from four thirty-five to five o'clock, and one was from six to sixteen. There'll be a motion on regular voting meeting to approve the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five committee meeting as presented. And there'll be a motion on regular voting agenda to approve the... Voting meetings from... Minutes from September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five as presented. Who do we have from administration is going to go today? All of them now that... Everybody. I have...
My first?
Yeah, look there, we got a...
Ready. I know the drill. Um, so, good evening. I wanted to share that this year at the high school, we started the Mountie Market. My learning, twelfth grade learning support teacher, Phil Rossi, started it through some donations from community members and local businesses. It's run by the autistic support students as well as the life skills students. They sell different products to all of the students and staff who come into the store. It is teaching them, um, skills, workforce skills, like cashiering, clocking in, clocking out, inventory management, customer service, and teamwork. Um, and the money that they make just continues to go back and be recycled into the force of the process. So, that's been really good for now. Recently, I went with my life skills teacher, Kelsey Phillips, and four of my students to the Unified Champions Schools Youth Summit. The goal of the summit is to empower students to collaborate with their peers, to create school engagement activities that promote inclusivity. And as a unified champion school, we are required to develop a club, which we've done. That's our Mountie Pride Club at the high school. We involve in unified sport, which we've done. That's our bocce program. And also promote and hold whole, whole school engagement activities such as pep rallies and cup challenges. We, in support of our Unified Champions Schools commitment, we also have a group who has committed to students and staff, who have committed to the cooler plunge in February. So, stay tuned for more details on that. We also just had our first blood drive of the year, and as you know, because I've talked about it before, it is one hundred percent student-driven, and we collected forty-two donations.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Um, I'd like to start off by talking about our education foundation. Our education foundation is going, uh, to make a donation to all four buildings, to our positive behavior program, in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. You'll be giving, uh, roughly two dollars a student. Also, for everybody out there, chicken barbecue dinner, November ninth, here at the middle school. If you're interested in not cooking on Sunday, November ninth, fifteen dollars a meal, black and blue barbecue. And, uh, it goes to the non, it goes to our nonprofit P.O. Education Foundation, the foundation that supports staff and students. So, uh, want to get that out there. Ticket, you can call any one of the four schools to get a ticket. And, uh, lastly, Life Fast Forward came earlier this month. Dusty Van Archick spoke, regional president of County National Bank. He spoke to our eighth graders about a career in finance and banking. And every month, as part of our three-three-nine plan, we'll have somebody local, um, from some type of a, a business, uh, kind of talk to our eighth graders and get them thinking about what they might want to do when they get out of high school. So, that's part of our, uh, three-three-nine plan. Other than that, things are going good in the middle school.
Thank you. You want to be next?
I don't know who to move next. Maybe Jeffrey.
Hi, you're, you're for me.
Okay. All right. Um, at Osceola Mills Elementary, our students did their first round of shopping with Mrs. Offill's life skills class. She's here in the back if she wants to give away. Um, she works well with her students. They fill the orders, um, and then they deliver them to all the classrooms. So, that's going really well. Um, we also had our student council elections. We had over twenty students run this year. Eleven members were elected. Their first duty, they attended empowering the bystander training at the CPI in Bellefonte. Um, students take the information they've learned there, and they'll do a presentation to the rest of the student body. Um, we held their first student council meeting within the building, and their goals this year are to improve cafeteria behavior, bring back the chess club, and organize an end-of-the-year talent show. Um, we have begun our parent lunches. We started this year in October with fifth-grade parents, and then each month, every grade level will have an opportunity to come in and eat with their students. Um, and the last thing I have listed are our students of the month. Each year, we have a goal for students to reach to be nominated as student of the month, and for the month of September, this was, um, being a good role model is how they were nominated.
Come on.
Good evening, everybody. So, a lot of things going on up here similar to OME. Uh, Mrs. Mason and I work together a lot on the different activities and what we're trying to do for our kiddos. So, at the beginning of that, you can see our students of the month for the beginning of the year. Our student council students, we had thirteen students also attend the CPI, uh, empowering the bystander training at Bellefonte through the IU. Our students coming back from that, um, part of what they have to do is they have to present, uh, an assembly to the student body. Well, our students want to do an assembly every month at our monthly rewards assembly. So, they pick different categories, and every month, they're going to do a different assembly about something that they want to work on within the school or present to their students. Beginning on Wednesday, our students meet, um, probably quarterly with Jade Holaba and Carrie. Uh, they come in and meet with some of our students on the council and talk about how we can improve our breakfast and lunch within the building, and just talk to the students, get ideas from them. So, that will be on Wednesday of this week will be the first time they're meeting with them. Uh, we had a check and connect training. Uh, I shared this last month, um, but the big part of that check and connect training that all the schools went through was our tier-two and tier-three PBIS programs to how to support those students that are struggling with those tier-one behaviors, and how we can, uh, help them identify whether it's academics, attendance, behavior. We just concluded our benchmarks for beginning of the year, and that was K to two and three to five. Next month in November, uh, we have a grant this year through the ECRI program, working with Patton and the IU. Uh, we are going to do a K to one family night, November twelfth. Our families are going to come in. Uh, we're going to present about the grant that we got. We're going to have teachers doing mini-sessions with the families to show them act, exactly what the kids go through every day. And during that time, I volunteer to take all the kids that are there that night. They'll hang out with me in the gym while the parents actually go in and explore and see what goes on in the classroom with the kids. And the last thing, uh, Mrs. Mason renewed our contract with the IU for the lending library. Mr. Good and I got to visit that on Wednesday of this past week. Uh, the IU offers men, this program offers many STEM-related programs and equipment for all grade levels. Uh, we're excited to team up with them. They talked about maybe coming in and, and working with each building to present what's available there to the teachers. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so, fall sports are have come to a, a conclusion for P.O. Our cheerleaders had a great spirit week last week. They had, uh, pep rallies at both the elementary schools, sorry, and, um, sponsored the trunk retreat, which is always a big success at the, at the high school on the Wednesday leading up to, um, Halloween. Um, at senior night, they had honored five seniors in their mascot. Um, for cross-country, they've just been in districts this past Saturday, and the boys finished the season four and eight. The girls finished with a record of three and eight. Um, our football team, uh, we ended up being five-hundred this year. This is the first time since two thousand eleven that we did not have a losing season, so, um, it's moving in the right direction. So, that's, uh, exciting, um, for the football team. Uh, golf, we had, uh, four students athletes, Jake Lucas, Ryan Colby, Parker Lamb, and Fisher White qualified for the sectionals, P.I.A. sectionals, and also Nick DeSimon, um, earned a spot for the team. And we had Jake just advanced to the district, uh, championship where he took, uh, fourth place overall and qualified, and then participated in the state championship at Penn State Golf Courses last week. Um, uh, girls' golf, um, they started off a little rough, four and seven, and but finished the season six and one down the stretch. Uh, they qualified for districts, and we had actually earned, as a team, third place in districts. And Maddox Hampton finished tied for sixth, um, at Wimpy Country Club that day. So, that's pretty exciting, um, for the girls, and they have six of eight letter winners returning for next season. Um, boys' soccer, uh, had three wins in the season, um, but, uh, one of them was a really big, uh, exciting win when they beat Ball Eagle, kind of big rival game. Um, with fifteen seconds left in the game, we scored. Um, so, one of the strengths for our boys' soccer team is no matter what, they, they kept competitive, um, throughout the season. Um, girls' soccer had a rough season. Uh, they didn't win any, or wins, uh, but there's a lot of improvement throughout the season. We had injury, we had sickness, um, underclassmen had to step up and fill the void. So, the girls started playing as individuals and ended the season playing together as a team. Volleyball had a rough, uh, had a season of seventeen, thirteen, and four. They qualified for districts and lost, um, in the first round last week. Um, junior high football finished out their season last Thursday at, uh, Tyrone. The A-team and B-team, they both got games in. A-team ended two, four, and one, and B-team three, one, and one. Uh, boys' junior high soccer won their first game in three years, so that's pretty exciting for, uh, boys' soccer. We had, uh, sixteen players on the junior high team this year. Fifteen were from P.O., and one was from our Co-op West Branch. Um, girls' soccer, uh, did not ha, have a great season, zero run twelve, but we had some athletes who never even participated in, in a, a, a sport, team sport before. So, it's great to see some, some newcomers, um, and get them exciting and interested in, in playing sport. Um, so, they made great strides in skill improvement and had some close games as the season progressed, and they improved throughout the season. Um, junior high volleyball, the, they had some positive improvements throughout the year. Uh, the A-team officially ended, uh, doesn't reflect how they, they really improved with great competitions. And the B-team, um, really made vast improvements through from the beginning to the end of the year. Um, so, that's pretty exciting. And we have winter sports. First day of practice is November fourteenth, so it's coming right down the road here. Um, and our head coaches for fall sports have put out our end-of-season survey. Um, you hear people talking a lot of the, the survey results come to me, and I, and then I'll share with our administration team. Um, and I know one of the big concerns have been, like, do parents' names get reported to coaches with, like, repercussions of comments and no, um... So, I, I created the survey and guidance from administration last year. Um, I shared the survey results with admin. Feedback, uh, is taken and provided to coaches, but no names of parents are, are shared upon that process, so if that comes up. Thank you.
So, this is a side note, this isn't in my written report, but I just wanted to say, um, it's really, it means a lot to me, and I think it means a lot to our families that all four of our buildings are continuing to make movements forward to include our special education students in all aspects of the buildings. Um, the lending library that Mr. Phi talked about, they were able to find a piece of equipment there, um, that is adaptive, that one of our students who, um, has a lot of fine motor and a lot of medical needs is able to use now to be able to participate in their regular education computer classroom. So, that's really cool. And just as a forewarning, if you walk down the first floor hallway of the high school during lunch periods, the students will come out, they will invite you into the store, and you will feel compelled to buy something. So, I got convinced the other day that I really needed to purchase some stickers, which were on sale for just ten cents a piece. So, um, it's really exciting though to see that and to see that the students feel a sense of belonging, and they feel like they are a part of their building culture. Um, we are working very closely right now with our ITech and also with Melissa Kraus, um, who's part of our special education administrative assistant team. She, um, is working really closely with me on understanding the changes to max capture and medical assistance billing so that we can tighten up on our procedures and try to capture more of that funding that, um, we should be eligible for. And that just looks like, um, Missy or myself going around and meeting with paraprofessionals, having them come here and meet with her, me going to buildings and talking with them about, um, the quality of the notes that they're taking and the documentation that we're doing, and trying to maximize that as much as possible. And also working on PIMS child accounting, um, which is super exciting, but also super important because it captures all of what, um, we are spending towards special education and what that population looks like. And then, we are really excited. We are very close to being fully staffed. We still have a couple openings here and there, but I know that Linda has been to a whole bunch of interviews. Um, but we have some new people who have started in our support classrooms, so that's really exciting, um, and good for our students. We have started, Dr. Reese and I have been going around. We've done all of the schools except for P.E. at this point, that we've done faculty meetings covering the first of our high leverage practice, and then we'll do our second one in the spring. That's part of our comp plan. We do have a huge increase in, um, requests for evaluations right now. So, we have an increase of seventy-seven percent compared to this time last year. Um, some of that is parent requests, some of it is school referrals. Um, so, we are continuing to see a high level of need there. Um, that is consistently happening in other districts throughout the state though as well. I've talked to some other special education directors, um, who are in other school districts, and they're seeing a similar trend. We did bring Michael Burke on from the C.I.U., so if you see a very tall gentleman walking around the district and you're not sure who he is, he is a certified school psychologist, level two, and he is doing the mentorship and supervision for Melinda so that she can finish up her internship year, working towards that certification.
Thank you.
Hey, tonight, um, with us, we have Jamie Doyle from PFM, and if you remember, it wasn't too long ago, she was here, made the drive, and so, uh, we have her back tonight. She has some information to share with us.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. You should each have a document at your places that contains my presentation. And I would really just preface before we get into it that the thing that has changed quite a bit since we began this plan of finance many, many months ago, and even since I was here in August, is we're all experiencing a prolonged state budget impasse. So, you know, keep that in mind. You'll probably hear me say that a couple of times throughout the presentation. If you turn to the inside cover, page number one, at the top, nothing new there, just a recap of federal tax law on the bank loan proposal that you previously approved with, with M&amp;T Bank. So, under federal tax law, you had to have reasonable expectations to spend eighty-five percent of the proceeds in three years, and that within six months of settlement, you expected it to enter into a substantial binding obligation to spend five percent of the borrowed amount, and then you just proceed with due diligence. And this piece of federal tax law is pertinent to that bank loan and that borrowing because the proceeds of that borrowing are for capital improvements. And so, they're not for operational cash flow in light of a state budget impasse, if you will. In that second section, what you locked in on that bank loan is a bank-qualified interest rate because it's less than ten million dollars. So, that's the lowest possible tax-exempt interest rate that you can, uh, obtain. And in bullet three, you know, again, just a reminder that under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, you can only spend that bank loan proceeds on, um, capital improvements, and any long-term debt for operational purposes that, that you may need in light of the state budget impasse, uh, you know, don't qualify for that bank loan. And so, in that next section, four, five, and six, those are the options that were previously considered, uh, for potential strategies to fund your healthcare consortium payment, which is an operational expense. And so, we previously looked at a debt restructuring, and, um, you know, basically, that just means scooping out some of your payments out of the upfront years of, of your budget and stretching them out a little bit longer. In number five, that was the one we originally decided to go with, pays, uh, finance pay-go capital projects through a long-term borrowing. That's what that bank loan is that I keep referring to. And, you know, you met all those qualifications. You needed professional cost estimates, you needed to meet that reasonable expectations test up above. Uh, and in that option, you were going to pay your healthcare consortium payments out of your cash and then use the proceeds from the bank loan for capital improvements. And, you know, really, the state budget impasse has interfered with that plan because you're using your cash to pay your operational expenses right now because you're not receiving your state subsidies. In, in that bottom section to a strategy review, we're suggesting that we pivot a little bit from the original plan, and in that first step, continue with the bank loan with M&amp;T, but delay closing one week to November fifth and downsize that bank loan a little bit. And we're going to look at exactly what that means in a second, uh, which will allow you to do less capital improvement projects by downsizing it, but it will also downsize the debt service payment on that bank loan. And then, step two, consider a TRAN, which is a tax and revenue anticipation note. And, and typically, you only think about doing a TRAN in a state budget impasse because you need the cash flow to meet your regular operating expenses. So, if you were to consider a TRAN for the twenty-five, twenty-six current fiscal year, uh, that would ensure sufficient cash flow to meet operations during the impasse. Trans are, are, are different than any other debt you've ever issued. A TRAN is short-term, and it must be paid back no later than the end of your fiscal year. So, it must be paid back by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. And there's a cash flow worksheet that is used to determine how much of a TRAN you could consider undertaking. And, and your administration has filled that worksheet out already, and, and, um, we'll talk about that in further detail in a minute. But that could be a step two because unfortunately, no one knows when the state budget is going to pass, but it certainly doesn't seem to be moving as quickly as, as we hoped at the beginning. And then, step three is reverting back to bullet point four up above. Consider a debt restructuring of the upfront principal payments on your two thousand fifteen A and your two thousand sixteen bonds. And if we restructured those, meaning scoop them out of the next two years' budgets and stretch those payments out, um, not further out in terms of years, but we would re-amortize them so that there was a little more principal out further at the end of, of, you know, it's going to mature in the same year, but they would be a little bit more heavily weighted, uh, and restructure that way. And then, that would give you, you'd still keep budgeting just as if you hadn't done it, but then you could set those, uh, those proceeds aside and rebuild your, your cash balances that you would ultimately spend on your, your healthcare consortium payment that's coming up. So, that, that's an overview of what the rest of the presentation contains, but it's basically, we're suggesting a three-step plan of finance now as opposed to originally, it was just one step. So, if you look at page two, that was your debt summary before you did anything. So, it does not contain the G.O. note series of two thousand twenty-five, M&amp;T Bank. That, that was your starting point. And when you look down below in column eighteen, you can see in the current year's budget, the net effect on, on debt service on your budget was two million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And then you see it goes down a little bit in, in years following that. So, that's important as we think about this concept of restructuring some of your debt. If you turn to the next page, this is a summary of, of everything I just described to you in that three-step plan. So, in column five, there was your debt service from the prior page. If you did nothing at all, keep making the payments in column five. In column one, that's the M&amp;T Bank loan that you already approved. We're suggesting that you downsize the principal amount. It was originally, uh, not to exceed three million five hundred and ninety thousand. We're suggesting you downsize it to one million five hundred and eight thousand. That will provide a construction fund deposit, again, for capital improvements of one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's still the same amortization over ten-year period, and it's level. And you can see what that would look like down below in column six. Again, just downsizing that bank loan you already approved. Then, I'm, I'm sort of jumping out to, to column three. Step two would be that TRAN that I was talking about, tax and revenue anticipation note. And you can see in box three that we're suggesting the amount of that TRAN be seven point four million dollars because based on the cash flow worksheet that the administration filled out, that would basically get you into March of two thousand twenty-six. God forbid, if, if the state budget impasse continued for that long. You know, we want you to be prepared, um, for the worst. And again, that would need to be repaid and assumes the state budget passes by June, which I've never seen one go longer than March. And even the one that went till March, they approved parts of the budget, so your subsidy started to flow, uh, that time. And then hopefully, some of those actions will, will start to happen here soon. Uh, but a, a worst-case scenario, if you did a seven point four million dollar TRAN, if you look down below in column ten, uh, a conservative estimate of what that might look like, if you held it all the way to June thirtieth, uh, would cost you about two hundred thousand dollars in interest. Again, we're always a little conservative, and we would work with M&amp;T Bank, the same bank that you see in the green in column one, uh, on the bank loan you already approved in order to negotiate that interest rate on that TRAN if you decide to proceed with that. And then, I'm moving back to column two, the debt restructuring. That would be the third step of the plan. You can see what that means in box two is that's roughly a one point four million dollar debt restructuring. And when you look down in, in column eight, what we're doing is we would scoop out some of your two thousand fifteen A and two thousand sixteen debt service in column eight to create cash flow relief, those two red numbers, you know, roughly a hundred and seventy-nine thousand in current year budget and about eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand in next year's budget. And then you can see, you know, we would re-amortize that principal over the remaining life of that loan. Again, not extending it in terms of, of years, but, uh, extending it in terms of weighted average life, a little bit more, uh, weighted to the end. And if we did all that, all three of those steps, exactly as we've laid them out, the most important column is, is column twelve. So, you can see the difference each year when you compare it to your, your two thousand twenty-five budgeted local effort in column four. Because again, your starting point, what you have in your budget right now is, is two million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, rounding up slightly. And so, you can see it would be an increase over that in the current year by about forty-three thousand, and then it would be a decrease because of that restructuring next year of about a million dollars. And you would set that million dollars aside and use it to rebuild your cash reserves that are going to get depleted between your healthcare consortium payment and, and the state budget impasse. And then you'd also have some cash flow savings in fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight and two thousand twenty-nine of about a hundred thousand and, and two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which again, you could use to rebuild your, your cash reserves. Any, any questions on that page before I go on? I know that's a lot, uh, of information. If you look at page four, this is the M&amp;T Bank loan. If we downsize it to one million five hundred and eight thousand, you can see the rate that you already locked in of three point six-three percent in column three, and you can see what those payments would look like. So, a partial payment in the current fiscal year of about twenty-two thousand, and then each year thereafter through and including two thousand thirty-five, it would be just under two hundred thousand dollars. And that was reflected on the prior summary page, but that's, uh, breaks it all down. If you look at page five, this is the sources and uses of funds on that one million... If you look at page five, this is the sources and uses of funds on that $1,508,000 loan. Again, you can see the settlement date on this page has been pushed out to November 5th. Nothing new on that page. Really, the only thing that changed is the principal amount and therefore the available for projects amount that again matched what we just looked at on the prior page. On page six, you'll see your updated portfolio with all of your debt issuances, assuming we downsize that M and T Bank loan, just as we've looked at on the prior page. So this is what it looks like at the end of the day. And then finally, on page seven is a sample timeline, step by step. So the first step, that M and T Bank loan that you already approved, the downsize amount could settle on November 5th. That's when the district would receive those funds, and they would be available for capital improvements. And then the timeline for the TRAN, we could be back with a resolution for your consideration at your November 24th voting meeting, and then that would settle probably late December. We don't really need as much time to settle that as we do a capital borrowing, but we also don't want to settle that any earlier than we have to, you know, that we will relate to the budget impasse, or passage, I should say, not impasse. And then finally, that third step, the debt restructuring, we could be back at your January 27th meeting or later with that resolution for your consideration, and then that would settle around the beginning of March. So I'm going to pause there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
As the board can see, on the budget, it's going to be under C, Budget Finance Transportation, item four. So we'll have that once we get out of the work session to the voting session. We do anticipate them coming back in November. Debating right now, if we happen to have a voting session added in early December, we may be, it may help us on the interest if we wait till that first week, week and a half of December. So that'll be the next step, provided we do not have a state budget. Because I believe Mr. Martin and I have talked, it's mid to end of December, we will run out of funds without favorable punishment here through a tax revenue anticipation note. Anything you want to add?
Yeah. Good job.
We appreciate you being here tonight. Any questions for Jamie?
Very good. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate the help. All right.
Are we going to need her again?
I think she's good to go unless there's any questions. Watch the deer. Watch the deer.
I saw plenty out there in the field.
So we'll let Mrs. Doyle get on the road there. We appreciate PFM being here tonight and just the help over the last couple of months trying to get us a pathway on a better course. In addition to my report tonight, we need to have a conversation or discussion on the four o'clock presentation tonight. This scenario number one talked about a K2, 3, 5 setup. In order to take that any further, there would require some additional help on the outside on transportation, from transportation company that we've touched base with two, narrowed it down to one. Prelimarily, the quote that they provided was in around the just shy of $10,000 mark. We're going to need direction on whether the feeling of the board is that that's something that would be worthwhile to invest in or whether that is something that before we invest $10,000, that we're going to go a different direction. And so with that, open it up to the board, and we need some guidance.
Would a member like to speak to that?
I don't agree with paying that money or.
I think we'll have some more discussions to figure out the direction before we would commit to paying anything.
Would there be any additional information you would need to come back, whether it's now, in November, or between, before then, or is that to be determined?
To be determined. Right this moment for me.
Others?
I agree with Alex. I think that we come back in November, further discuss. Thank you. But.
Austin?
Yeah, just feel we need some more clarity, more information. Obviously, the goal here is, you know, where are we going to be in three to five years? Right? I mean, that's really the goal here. We're not here to try to, you know, try to do something that's not going to be feasible for the, for the stewardship. We're going to have the best, you know, best on this and being able to try to put a good solution in front of, you know, the community. It's not just about us looking here to save this dollar, that dollar. We're in a position now where it took us, it's really hurting us now. There was, you know, going back probably 10 years ago that we, that we looked at some things, you know, we depleted our funds. That's really what happened when we built the bill. We depleted our general fund, and that is hurting us today. It does rear its head later, and now we're dealing with it. So, I mean, that's $5 to $6 million. And to be honest, if that doesn't happen, we're not talking today. We have the access funds. So I just think we just got to put some more, find out some more clarity, find out what we're going to do going forward. But, you know, to invest $10,000, I'm on the fence right now. I'm not really sure whether I want to do that yet or not. You know, I just need to get some more information myself and, you know, come back into them.
So in general, it looks like put it on hold. They're coming back, correct?
Now, I think we do need to make a, you know, final decision in November because we do got to lay out all the options. That's really the bottom line here is we've got to lay out all the options for the district. That way, we're not continuing to raise the taxes each year for the community. We have to start this now, or we're never going to do it. You know, in three to five years, we're really going to have to make some tough decisions and maybe even before that. So not easy, but we're here to do what's best for the district and, you know, being able to provide the best education for our students.
Anybody else?
I would agree with what he had to say, I think. Right now, I mean, I don't have enough in front of me knowing where we're going to go, where we're going to be in three to five years to invest this money. Is it going to be for a reason? Is there going to be reason that we did it? Is it going to be, or is it going to be something that we did and ultimately go in a different direction and the $10,000 that we don't really have, we don't really want to spend, really waste it, if that makes sense? So I think, not saying no, not saying yes, I just need a little bit more information for me to say yes or no. And I would say November, we do probably have to make a decision.
I'm agreeing.
You with that? All good?
Yep.
But I think in November, we have to have a definitive answer.
Yeah.
Either go or not go as far as hiring a consultant and spending $10,000. So we're going to place that on hold until November.
That's the answer. Albert MacDisham, information in November.
Anything else you have?
It's everything from my report.
Anybody from the board have anything to break forward?
We'll go to C, we'll go to Budget Finance Transportation.
Mr. Minarchi?
Yeah, there will be a motion on a regular voting agenda through the financial report for number 2025 as presented. There's a regular voting agenda to approve the following dispersments and credit card statements with dispersments being $1.24 million for the month of September, payroll being $1.13 million. And there will be a motion on a regular voting agenda to recognize change in the amount of the general obligation note, which we had just discussed with Mrs. Doyle, series of 2025, an amount of $1.5 million. And there will be a motion for regular voting agenda to open an investment account with PSDLF. For the proceeds for this note, for the note series of 2025, the money will be invested into an account for us to be able to, as we continue to figure out what we're going to do with this, throwing it down later. There will be a motion on a regular voting agenda through the following drivers for 2025, 2026 school year as presented.
Thank you. Building on grounds of the motion on the regular voting agenda to recycle obsolete, damaged, malfunctioning electronics, mobile carts, the KVS Computers in Newsville, Pennsylvania, no cost to the district. KVS is a government certified electronics recycling company. There'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to disperse old math textbooks at the Phillipsburg OCLM metal store. And there'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to dispose of coffee dust of the chair of sifted technology devices outdated and broken at OCLM. Anything on community relations? Mrs. Bosse?
Not right now.
We're on to curriculum instruction. Dr. Ramirez?
The motion on the regular voting agenda to approve memorandum of understanding between Phillipsburg OCL school district and Phillipsburg OCL education association regarding textbook selection as presented. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve field trip requests for 25, 26 school year as presented.
Thank you. And let's go to Missy Bush, personnel.
There'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to post a long-term substitute teaching position for the Phillipsburg OCL area school district for the 2015, 2026 school year.
Point.
Yeah.
Correct.
School year posting retroactive to October 7th, 2025. Long-term substitute teacher. There'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to hire Jordan McDonald as a long-term substitute teacher for the Phillipsburg OCL area school district at a bachelor's step one prorated salary of $51,770 for the remainder of the 2025, 2026 school year. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Phillipsburg OCL area school district and the Phillipsburg OCL education association for credit reimbursement as presented. Hire. There'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to hire Dana Fleck as a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant, requiring safe crisis management certification at OCL Mills Elementary at the rate of 1525 per hour effective upon completion of required paperwork. Hire. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to hire Courtney Hummel as a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant, requiring safe crisis management certification at Phillipsburg OCL middle school at the rate of 1525 per hour effective upon completion of required paperwork. Hire. There'll be a motion on a regular voting agenda to hire Shawna Yurich as a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant, requiring safe crisis management certification at Phillipsburg Elementary School at the rate of 1525 per hour effective upon completion of required paperwork. Transfer. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to transfer Madison Leneski from a 4.5-hour special education instructional assistant at the Phillipsburg OCL high school to a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant at Phillipsburg OCL high school effective 20, September 23rd, 2025. There is no change in hourly rate. Transfer. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to transfer Sheila Lurch as a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant at Phillipsburg Elementary School to a 5.75-hour special education instructional assistant at Phillipsburg OCL high school. There is no change in hourly rate. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to post a 5.75 special education instructional assistant for age three through five learning support position at Phillipsburg Elementary School, posting effective October 24th, 2025. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to accept the resignation of Cory Rigaud as a six-hour special education instructional assistant autistic support, requiring safe crisis management certification at Phillipsburg Elementary School, effective August 31st, 2025. Post. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to post a six-hour special education instructional assistant autistic support position requiring safe crisis management certification at Phillipsburg Elementary School, posting effective October 24th, 2025. Hire. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to hire Brandon Evans as a five-hour district-wide custodian at Phillipsburg OCL middle school at a rate of 7 hours per hour effective upon completion of required paperwork. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve the following pre-seen teachers for the 2025, 2026 school year as listed in your agenda. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Phillipsburg OCL area school district and the Phillipsburg OCL education association to remove the position of occupational therapist from the bargaining unit as presented.
Thank you.
Mr. Mac.
There'll be, excuse me, there'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to update policy 815.1, use of generative artificial intelligence in education as presented.
Thank you. Student affairs.
There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a community and school-based behavioral health program commitment to fidelity implementation agreement in school districts adestation as presented. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a recent Phillipsburg OCL school district and new direction solutions LLC doing business as pro-care therapy for remote psychology services for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. A motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a student assistant program agreement between the Phillipsburg OCL area school district, the Clerksville-Jefferson Drug and Alcohol Commission, and the community connection to the Clerksville-Jefferson counties for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. A motion on the regular voting agenda to approve a school-based probation program agreement between the Phillipsburg OCL area school district and the Center County Juvenile Probation Department for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. The motion on the regular voting agenda to approve the following extracurricular positions for the 2025, 2026 school year. The motion on the regular voting agenda to approve the following condition volunteers for the 2025, 2026 school year listed. The motion on the regular voting agenda to post a middle school spring dance advisor position, posting effective October 21st. A motion on the regular voting agenda to approve team events, practices, and activities for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. A motion on the regular voting agenda to approve winter athletic events as presented. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve facility use individual agreement between the Phillipsburg OCL area school district and West Branch area school district for girls varsity soccer as presented.
There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to approve an agreement with parents of the Phillipsburg OCL area school district student and the district to authorize the district superintendent to sign any necessary paperwork, effective saying retroactive launch birth 2025. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to update the 25, 26 middle school student handbook as presented. There'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to accept the resignation of Todd Jeffries as a member of the Phillipsburg OCL school district board of directors effective immediately. And there'll be a motion on the regular voting agenda to advertise a seat for the Phillipsburg OCL area school district board of directors representing the district of the Phillipsburg Borough.
Second.
representing the district of the Phillipsburg Borough, Second Ward, Rush North Central Precinct Number 11 and 15. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
There's a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that concludes that one. We will go directly into the voting meeting. Your head or pledge. These two will highlight it. Okay. So we'll open the voting meeting on October 27th. Start time now is 7:22. Ronnie, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Vanny Shaw.
Here.
Dr. Ramirez.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Justly. Mr. Menarche.
Here.
Mr. Bayes.
Here.
Mrs. Vesneski.
Here.
And Mr. Wood.
Here.
There'll be a motion to approve the September 22nd, '25 committee meeting minutes as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a motion to approve the September 22nd, '25 voting meeting as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll open up the mic for any visitors who would like to sign into the paper. And there's a mic, does anybody like to speak? Generally, there's a three-minute limit. Anybody would like to speak? You got that set up? Doesn't even have to come up.
Well, I came listening this afternoon to the presentation on our financial position. I didn't know we were in this much trouble, but always sad to hear that. I guess you could be a lot of way to go around a lot of people, but anyways, we're not here for that. Sort of wanting to think about how we may get out of this mess if we can. One thing I will say though is the overall money, the responsibility lies with the board of education. You're elected, you're supposed to have a hand for them. So that's where that race came. But I was listening, you know, you have a deep plan, you don't know when you know your funds are going down. And you probably know how many people you're gonna not have. So you would know basically how much less money you're gonna have. But anyway, you should be able to work that out. And one of the things that you should do is stop spending, period. Now, I haven't listened to your superintendent. I think he agrees well. He goes over everything, grow up. I don't know. And probably I don't either, but anyway, the things that you're gonna be faced with is gonna be enormous. And I, I don't know whether it's the best thing to just let it go, let the state take it over. But I know that's not the way I'd like to see it. Cause then they cut everything, you know? So that's, that's one of my chief concerns. This year I, my taxes went out, okay, everyone's went out. Now, I'm not complaining about the taxes as much as I am as the kids aren't getting their education. I'm really disturbed with that. And we're coming in last, and we're broke. What's going on? Yeah. You wonder what's going on, yeah. Superintendent was saying about how much it takes football for a man to, you know, what was that figure? Just give me, I already said.
So to replace it every eight to 10 years is about 80,000 a year should be put back.
Okay, so what I would suggest, you sell them back. We don't need it. We've got Memorial Field down there, which is, we played for years on it. But anyway, you do what you want, but it's been a hassle around their neck forever. In fact, I was on the board when they wanted to do that, I was the only one voting against it. But it was, it was a bad deal. Costs us too much to do for an order. And there's a lot of other things that I didn't like, but anyway, we, I was up in Winstonville that all this pile of rocks under. As one of the students, when I played football, I said, I mean, I get filled. He said, boy, that barbecue hit harder there. Yes, my rocks, you know? But anyway, instead of having something like that around their neck forever, I would rather go up to Memorial Field and play a game of football. As lots of top school areas that don't have art. Anyway, that's in there, there.
Appreciate it, Jim.
What's that?
Three minutes. We're trying to hold it to three minutes so anybody can.
Okay, wait, I just hope you do your job. Thank you.
Anybody else? Why not? Could you give us your name, please? Can you go up there?
Yes, sure.
There's a sign in sheet.
Okey-dokey, I'll be short signed.
You do that afterwards.
Okay, so my name is April Woods. I think that I can provide kind of a unique feedback to you guys. And I will say that nobody has ever asked me for this before, but my family has three going on, four kids, and none of them are currently enrolled within this school district. I chose to homeschool for multiple reasons, but one of the main reasons was because when my child was entering kindergarten, the school had no ability to do any kind of evaluation, even though he was at least two grade levels above. They said I had to wait until first grade for you guys to even address his academic needs. So I kept him home and I thought I was going to put him in in first grade, but I chose not to because the school still didn't offer him anything. When I tried to get information, nobody talked to me. So then fast forward, I have a son that could easily be in your autism support classrooms right now. Think about the funding that you guys could get if you just enroll him. But instead seeing, instead of seeing him as a person, it seemed like it was just a fun that you guys were after. Nobody saw him as a person. In fact, he had an education plan already made out before anybody met him at this school district. Despite the fact that his services said that he would be best suited in a shared aid situation, his placement within your district was going to be in the self-contained classroom. And I was told, maybe he could get out at recess and maybe we could address this and change it up. If that wasn't the right thing, instead of giving him the ability to work to his full potential within a regular classroom. Nobody is asking the people that aren't enrolling their kid what the issue is. And if you did, you'd probably have your kids here. Now that I've already made their education decision, my plan was to still try to get my kids enrolled at this school once some of these things may, maybe got addressed. But now, I'm seeing these larger class sizes. I know that if you get rid of teachers within the high school, it will impact your AP classes, which will directly impact my child that is so much further ahead. The decisions that you make are costing you money. If I enroll my children in a cyber charter school, which would have BPOs because you guys are struggling to run your brick and mortar, I certainly would not enroll them in your cyber charter school. These are the funds that are slipping from you. And you guys are debating about $10,000 in the transportation, whatever you guys are just talking about. We're talking more money than that just within my household. You're letting it slip away because you guys aren't even asking people. Why are we not enrolling our kids? Nobody has asked. That's a failure that you guys have done to your own school district. You're costing money.
Thank you. Maybe anybody else would like to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Ryan Stages. Remember you guys know me through whether it be public service or through my business, but I am a local business owner. And I can say that I haven't been privy to everything you guys have on the plates. And I understand that the decisions you have to make are huge decisions. And I don't envy the role you guys are in, so I trust you guys will do your very best with this. Couple of questions that I have though, I wasn't able to catch the whole meeting. I caught the tail end of it tonight. But it seemed like a lot of emphasis was paid on decisions that were made during the '15-'16 period. The football field for one. How are you guys going to look at situations like that moving forward? And although you're focusing on things that you need to do the next couple of months and the next year or two, how are you guys planning to make sure things like this don't happen again? I would say that if you look from a broader scale of where we were as a country in 2008 during the Great Recession, the reason we're in a much more stable place economically than what we were back then was because of some of the decisions the government was forced to make during that time. So on a much smaller scale, because you guys are in elected positions, what decisions have you guys been thinking about to stop some of the things that you're talking about tonight that happened in '15 and '16? How are we gonna prevent this?
Well, Ryan, I guess the numbers we're looking at right now are pretty immediate. We gotta, we gotta attack this thing early right now. I just brought up several months ago that we need to develop a five-year plan so we know where we're going. I also brought up before that we have aged buildings and we need to get a plan that ties in with our age buildings. Cause we got a high school that was built in the 50s. And the decisions, you know, we can't harp on what was done. Those people that were in charge did it sober. And now I think you've got the people, and there's a couple new board people will be coming on. And I think the focus will be forward. And the accountability will be held to a high level, I'm sure. And even like the public input, like right now, and try to include the public for their opinions. And just like today, we're gonna open up probably January, February so we know what the public feels about the scenarios. So we're trying to be more transparent, move forward, get a short goal plan and a long goal plan.
Well, Mr. Wood, obviously we go back to when I was a kid, right? I mean, you've seen me be eight, nine-years-old and grow to a man today. What I will say is like the decisions that I've grown up with and I saw, I graduated in '06, which was arguably the biggest financial crisis our school district's been in. And fast forward 20 years to today and where we're at today, what I didn't see between those 20-year periods are the school we're thinking you're talking about. Like a school that is inevitably aging. Buildings are only made to last 30 to 40 years when you look at appreciation from a business standpoint. That's for a reason. So what I'm saying is I understand, and I speak on the public when I say this, you guys have a very tough decision to make and it's affecting a lot of people. Now, for me personally, I started a business here and it relies on the creative field. I already feel like our business is pinched trying to find people with creative skill sets. But I also understand where you guys are today, you have to make some tough decisions and that might need some R classes. Although I have a problem with that, what I will say, and speaking of the lady that spoke before me, there are financial burdens to this. Is that gonna force businesses like mine someday to look at other places to start a business? Because I need these folks in my business to be able to thrive someday. So decisions we're making today are very important. So what I say is I understand the decision you guys have to make here in the next couple of months, into the next year, but we truly need to be thinking long-term. What does, I heard our superintendent say that we're not focusing on the three, four, or five-year period earlier in the meeting this morning, or this afternoon. We have to be thinking about that because it's affecting taxpayers, it's affecting, affecting our teachers, it's affecting our kids, most importantly, it's affecting businesses too. So please think that through and please be thinking about what this looks like as we move forward and how we're gonna stop it from happening again.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, Ryan, I'll just kind of call that real quick. I mean, the goal right now is to be able to replenish our general, general capital accounts. And we have to start somewhere and that's immediate. Right now, in that one, two-year period now, but as I had mentioned earlier, the three-to-five-year period and the 10-year period is really, but you have to start re-capitalizing your general operating and capital accounts before you can do that. And right now is tough decisions that are gonna happen within the next three to six months. But yes, the, the long-term goal is.
Well, again, I share this and I've seen out in the hallway here. I look at our high school. It is not in the greatest shape. OME is not in the greatest shape. Okay, we continue to see this. Now, we had this, we had a financial crisis in '06, right? And here we are 20 years later. And once we got past that storm, and I, I believe you guys will be able to get us through this storm too because you're very smart people across the board. But we've got to take a reality check at some point and say, we've got some big fish to fry. And over the period of, as long as I've been alive, it seems like there's been a lot of Band-Aids placed along the way. And there seems to be another one because you guys have a dilemma, short-term. What is the long-term approach after you guys get through that? And I think you guys need to think about that as you're navigating this decision. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I don't know if we can hear you.
I mean, I could have talked louder.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Kohler. I know many of you. I have two students here at PO, one in middle school, one in high school. And I also have a unique approach. I'm an administrator at CCA currently. The last six years, I was at the CTC, which PO is one of our districts. And I was a 16-year high school English teacher at Ocean Valley, also local to here. I also don't have a legal position. And administration can't make decisions that are gonna make everybody happy, but we have to look at the greater good. One thing, well, a couple of things I didn't hear tonight that I don't know if it had been thought of, but as you've mentioned, every district is struggling. Every district has lower enrollment. And part of that is Commonwealth Charter Academy, other cyber schools. And it takes a hit to the districts. I completely see that. But I wonder, with West Branch, this is an example, they are losing their enrollment as well. Move back, or enrollment. Has there been a thought of combining districts and combining resources? Whether it be sports, I know we've done that at some points. What about academics? Coming from the CTC background, giving that opportunity for students, cause I know it's been discussed prior to leaving, is it possible that instead of it just being seniors going in the PM, but there is that AM and PM option? Would that open up more scheduling opportunities? Has block scheduling been considered? Is that something feasible to fewer teachers, teach more students? And we know our test scores are low. So I, I fear lowering math and English, is that going to take a greater hit on PSSAs and Keystone? And trust me, I'm not a fan of standardized test scores, but that's about our pay rates, it is what it is. But how do we not lose those items too? Because we have to consider that for our funding as well. So how can we raise those test scores? And if we furlough teachers, who are the ones gonna be furloughed? Is it the least senior or is it the least efficient and effective? So I'm curious about all of these things. I don't know any of them have been brought up because I haven't been behind the closed doors conversations, but I just wanted to bring them to everyone's attention as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Lauren Willis. I just have a simple question, I think. The restructuring that you proposed today, do you have a timeframe for that? Like whether that be starting for next fall, is it like a two-year plan? Just wondering a general timeframe and when those changes would take place.
I'd rather be in. I was just going to say, I think tonight we're able to do a little bit of, but generally not question and answer, it's public comment. But to share with you, to answer that, it's where we're at, it would be something that we'd be looking at for next year. That's why we're having a conversation. But yeah, appreciate public comment.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Oh, we've got another one?
Okay. My name is Jeanette Sankey. I don't know any of you, but I have grandchildren that go to the school. A couple of questions I have. What is the closest amount you can give us, just a total? I know I was at every meeting this afternoon. What is the total amount of debt that we're looking at? I know there was X amount from this and there was X amount from that. But in general, what is the total amount we're looking at?
So from the two meetings today, you're saying? It was just that our funds had been depleted. From a debt standpoint, there was the 23 million capital expenditures. It was at like 30-some million, we had it down to 23. But I guess just to understand your question further, I'm not sure I understand from a debts perspective.
How much of a deficit are we looking at? Like I know it was this amount because of the football field and this amount because of that help.
So our, as we look to go into the spring budget, like what I can share is from last year. Last year's deficit, when we went into it, was about a 1.2, 1.3 million dollar deficit. We chose to take some out of fund balance, we chose to take some out of taxes, basically tax increases. And we basically operate on a negative balance sheet from that standpoint into this year. So I can't speak to this year's yet, but I can speak, the last year's was in the 1.2, 1.3 million dollar deficit.
Okay. Following that, I know like right now, Rush Township is having a meeting with the solar fields again. And I know they have offered X amount. I'm not saying I'm for the solar field or against the solar field. But if I had to choose between the sight that I'm seeing as I'm driving over a mountain and our children's education, I would pick the children's education. And I understand they've offered X amount over X amount of years. What if you go back and say it was this? I mean, they went in here so badly. And I know this, I've been on the inside of this, I used to work at Rush Township. They want to know what we want, but nobody tells them anything. They're like, if you want a community pool, let us know. We can't have that put in a contract per se, but if they know what we want, they'll give it to us. But nobody's saying anything to them. And no offense against Teresa Mall, I like her, but I mean, her paper's a little biased when it comes to that. Am I done? Can I speak again? Do I go sit down and come back up?
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
If it comes down to teachers being cut, would you bring in more student teachers? I know they have to be paid, but I'm sure they wouldn't be paid as much as regular teachers and it would at least give the students someone else to go to.
I would say this whole thing is a work in progress. You know, how it is resolved, nobody has any preconceived ideas.
Are there plans for the AP programs? I've heard a lot for the special education and programs like that, but I haven't heard anything about the AP programs.
Again, that's, it's all mixed in.
And I'm assuming the athletic programs as well? Is there's...
Everything's on the table right now.
Okay. Has anybody talked to the students about what's going on or anything? Because I can tell you right now, and it's very upsetting when I have grandchildren, very intelligent grandchildren, and their self-esteem is in the toilet. Because they said, oh, well, we've got the lowest test score. Our, we're all just a bunch of losers here. That's heartbreaking to hear. And they already think that. Maybe somebody should talk to them. They might have some good suggestions, I don't know. But we're all talking about them, but nobody's talking to them. And I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Here in this room, does it stay near the mic or not? My name is Kristi Evern. I have two children in the district, both in elementary school. And I was at the meetings earlier and I've been listening to everybody ever else is staying here. I keep hearing people talk about going cyber. And I have a lot of conversations with parents outside of the school. And you know, here are people, whether it's rumors, whether it's buzz, whether it's actuality. What does it cost the district to have a child do cyber school? And from my understanding, I think there's maybe a couple of different options with that. Maybe the district has a cyber option, but then you can go to CCA. And if there, per child doing cyber school, in any one of those scenarios, does anybody have a cost to what that costs the district?
For, we budget almost about a million dollars a year for cyber charter. The basic ed student is roughly, right now, the funding for basic ed is 16,000 and special ed's about 32,000 a year.
Is that for the cyber division or if somebody would go CCA?
Somebody goes to CCA, we get billed from CCA for 16,000 for a regular ed. If it's a special ed, like if they have something, an IP is 32,000 dollars a year.
So just maybe information for the board or whoever's making decisions like this. I know that me, just as an individual, an implant to Phillipsburg, I did not grow up here, I don't know a ton of people. The amount of parents that I've heard say that they will pull their child from the district if some of these scenarios are voted on and go through is very high, in my opinion. Because like I said, I can't believe I'm just standing up here talking into this microphone. I don't, I really don't know a lot of people, you know, like I didn't grow up here. But just from what I am hearing, just from being at school events, hearing about parents talk about this, I just think it's, it would be wise to keep in mind that the amount of parents that might actually be willing and pull their children from the school district to send cyber could end up costing a fortune. I mean, hearing parents come up with plans already, the ones that are at work that can't, like I would have trouble pulling my kids and having them do cyber schools. I work, my husband works full-time, I work full-time. But they're literally getting together, having a plan that worked well. Then this parent who does stay home, who does work from home, that's where we'll send our kids to do the cyber. I think maybe a public vote on who would be planning on pulling the kids, I think the cyber school cost could really, really increase for the district. Just something to keep in mind.
I'm Eric Rito. Much like Kristi, I'm an implant into the town, it came in around 2009. In 2009, they're kind of going through all the financial aspects, just kind of like Ryan was saying. I know Michael Conte came in, he kind of worked with the school district, got everybody out of debt, and here we are again. So I kind of really agree with what Ryan was saying, that I kind of came in during all that and I, now I have two kids, three that are going to be in the school here. And looking at the future of where we're going, you know, there needs to be some accountability. You know, like, why did we let ourselves get here? Did we really need a football field like this? You know, when we're looking at buildings and stuff, I mean, we knew the maintenance of these buildings. We knew the, you know, enrollment of the kids and everything. And when we're looking at stuff, like we have GOs out there as a prison. GOs brings in a ton of tax revenue to the school district. What happens if their contract goes out and ICE doesn't renew the contract? Then where are we going to be at a school? Like, are we thinking of these things? Are we putting money away and accounting for this? You know, it seems like we didn't even account for what a football field was going to cost and here we are. And what if big businesses like that do go out? What if the industry would have went out of town? That was a possibility, you know, if they would have went over it, we'd lose that tax revenue. You know, these are big decisions that our schools, like, I'm not blaming any of you guys up here, but this is stuff that I feel like there has been zero accountability and our kids are the ones that are going to pay. I live, I work in town, I get to, you know, talk to a lot of the kids, a lot of the older adults. So I have a big diverse clientele. And with that clientele, you have the older people that can't afford the taxes to keep raising them. You have the kids that are worried that they're not going to be able to be prepared for college because you're going to cut their programs. And then you have parents saying they're going to pull their kids and parents that outfold their kids. So we're having a decrease in enrollment because of decisions that have been made. And what worries me is we make decisions, we have more of a decreased enrollment. Are we looking at maybe merging with Mo Valley and West Branch? You know, West Branch has put in 28 million dollars at their elementary school. Is that even an option? You know, like, these are things, like, are we making these hard decisions? So I feel as a taxpayer, as a parent, as that, like, these are scenarios that I don't know the answer to all. I wasn't here at the four o'clock making here all the financials. It's just, I feel, I just feel like as a parent and a taxpayer, I'm kind of just frustrated and disgusted with the decisions that have been made. Just like you said, 2005, when this all happened, here we are. It's been 20 years and we're back in the scenario that the state's going to take the school over because we weren't financially responsible. So I don't know, I just, I hope you guys make the right decisions and just think, no, because I stand outside picking up my kids and I hear all the parents talking. If they make this, I'm going to pull my kid if I do this and that's just going to hurt us worse. So I hope, I hope the right decisions are made. I think you need to be very transparent with the people and pretty much, you know, just ensure the parents have the education. We have to do the best for the kids, but provide, you know, the best for the taxpayer also, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Smith. We were just talking about the football field. I just was curious, is there anything we can do with the football field that could help with savings? Like, does the $80,000 go towards the turf? Because that has to be, you know, updated. If so, can we move it back to grass? I know that's probably a suggestion that not a lot of sports fans are going to like, but is that a possibility? Because 80,000 a year seems like an awful lot for turf. I didn't know if there was any other options that were just not...
Well, part of the problem, and it's turf, because you've got girls' soccer, boys' soccer, all kinds of football using the same field. And when you have a grass field, you have no grass, and so then it becomes a hazard.
Yeah. What about the other football field though? Do we still, I mean, we still...
We still own that and release that right now. That'll be discussed down the road.
Okay. I was just curious if that would be, you know, an option to save some money, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Foster. I wasn't going to talk, but then everybody else talked, so I guess I will. I'm from the area, I'm a 2005 graduate. I have family that work for the district. I don't know, there's a lot of things that I could point out. Whenever you were talking about cutting the teachers, do you really think that educationally, academically, it's worth having 14 kindergarten teachers between OCLO and PE? But then cutting nine teachers from the high school where the children need more academic structure in high school to go on for the rest of their life? Kindergarten, I'm not dissing anybody that is a teacher and that if you're a kindergarten teacher, you're not as good as somebody that's in 11th grade. But it is harder to be a high school teacher, in my opinion, than to have a bunch of kids running around for late in life. That's just one thing. You guys were discussing about the $10,000 for the transportation. If we wanted to yay or nay that, how closely are all of the funds being watched whenever you do spend something? Like this gentleman mentioned earlier, we need to not spend anything. Was it necessary to, is it necessary to outsource all of the cafeteria workers' jobs? Pretty soon you're going to do it to the janitors, to the maintenance workers. Was the janitors, the custodians have waxed the floors in these schools for years upon years. Was it necessary to spend $7,000 to outsource that for the high school? That could have been $7,000 that we don't have. Those, that little bit of money adds up. There's things to get rid of around high school, around the junior high, all of these schools that everybody had to bid on. So things that were just gone at the high school not long ago, how much should we pay somebody to remove that? That's money that adds up and makes a difference. And like Kristi said about the cyber schooling, that's where you're losing all of, you're going to lose even more money because the parents were done. And I mean, there are still some that are on board right now that were on the board whenever Palladino was here. And right there's your biggest problem. Everybody in this room knows that. That's your problem, why you're broke right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Haley Reinsdorf. I just want to say that I did not go to Phillipsburg School District. I actually went to West Branch. I'm emotional because growing up, Phillipsburg was the school that I wished that I could have went to because the education and reputation of this school was everything. And my husband and I decided to build a house in the school district to give our kids that opportunity. I spoke with the superintendent and personally, probably about a month ago, just concerning all of this stuff because as a mom, a taxpayer, a community member, this is not transparent, nothing. I mean, what we talked about that day was these aren't definite scenarios. That's what you told me. So I feel like the community also needs to see that side that although you're displaying these scenarios, there are not definite options moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just feel like, you know, parents, everybody needs to know that, that this is not just a three-option scenario for our kids and there are other options. And there are other options, and we need to talk as a community to try to, to preserve the reputation of Phillipsburg and like the school district and the education that our, our children are working so hard to obtain. And like I said, I just, I just want there to be transparency for parents, everybody to know that these are just not set in stone options, just these three that we're seeing on the screen. Because if I can remember correctly, there are multiple beyond that as well.
We're looking, so even with tonight's presentation, this is where we are now. We're, we've got a long way till we get to spring. Right here, here's three options in each of those buildings.
Okay, so there are other options aside from those three options?
It's the only options at this point that we talked about. We're still continuing to dig in and being able to put in a long hours here to be able to provide more options. We just, it just takes a little time.
And they're not necessarily options, they're just scenarios.
Okay.
And more scenarios can be created than we go through this. Still a moving target.
Okay. I just feel like the information that's being provided is here are the three scenarios, and it's not discussed with any parents or the community. These are other options. And so as a mom, a community member, and a taxpayer, I am concerned with my kids and the teachers that have mortgages. They, you know, they, this is their livelihood and they chose to work in the school district to, to make their livelihood. So I just feel like seeing this terrifying information is not transparent either. I know that you have to have three scenarios, but it's just scary to look at, sitting here and looking at these three scenarios. And it seems like there's no budget. It's like, we have to have a decision made in November for this December thing. And it's just like a lot for everybody sitting here to take it when there could be 10 more options sitting behind that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, and the other thing is, is I know this is not just the school board. It's not, it doesn't just fall. It goes back 10 years, and I understand that. And I don't want to dwell on the past because we want to move forward. We want what's best for our kids. We want to preserve the reputation of Phillipsburg. But it is a privilege to have our kids enrolled in Phillipsburg or school district.
Thank you. Any other?
Can I just ask a question really quick without coming back down? She just asked about the three scenarios right now, and you guys haven't discussed any further scenarios. Is OSeola closing down one of the possible scenarios?
I think it's safe to say on that one, that is not a scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Thanks for everybody's input, appreciate it. We do have a consent agenda. Anything we need to do on a roll call?
Like K3?
Do you want to? Which one?
It's about four.
We need to do, this one on a roll. General obligation. Okay, we are going to pull. C3, to do separately. Linda, do you want to pull one?
Yeah, K4.
What was it?
Or K3. K3.
K3.
C3 and K3.
K3 and C4 will be pulled for a roll call vote. So our C3 and K3 will be roll call votes. Roll call votes for the consent. Okay, I need a motion to approve a consent agenda. With the exception of pulling C3, we'll do separately, and K3, doing separately. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
We have a motion on second? Second. We have a second. Roll call vote on consent agenda?
Mrs. Bayney Shaw, yes. Dr. Willmeyer. Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries. Ms. Lamb. Mr. Menarche.
Yes.
Mr. Vankis.
Yes.
Ms. Dusinski.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're going to, we pulled C3. Mr. Menarche, could you read C3, please? Just recognize the change in the amount.
Yep, most to recognize the change in the amount of general obligation to note series of 2025 to 1.508 million.
That was our motion, could I have a second, please?
Second.
We have a second. Need a roll call for C3, please.
Dr. Willmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries. Ms. Lamb. Mr. Menarche.
Yes.
Mr. Vankis.
Yes.
Ms. Dusinski.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Bayney Shaw.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Then we have pulls K3. Go ahead, Linda.
Motion to accept the resignation of Todd Jeffries as a member of the Phillipsburg-OSeola Area School District Board of Directors, effective immediately.
We have a motion, could I have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries. Ms. Lamb. Mr. Menarche.
Yes.
Mr. Vankis.
Yes.
Ms. Dusinski.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Bayney Shaw.
Yes.
And Dr. Willmeyer.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I just wanted this pulled separately because Mr. Jeffries has spent several years on the school board, and the board would like to thank him for his service and time.
Thank you. Anything else coming for the board?
Mr. Martin, at our current rate and with our fund balance, if we didn't change anything operationally, how many years do we have before we would be broke? If you don't have that answer now, if you could provide it to us for the next meeting, I think just to further cement the idea that our financial status right now, we just can't operate the same way.
As you're talking without any catastrophes, spoilers?
Yeah, the, pretend, you know.
There's no ruse, HVAC, nothing.
Obviously, that's something that we need to keep in mind. As is right now, no emergencies about how long we would have.
Sounds like he's going to get that. Just to throw some numbers out though, if our deficit last year was 1.2, 1.3, we're operating this year in a negative 400 paper deficit. You put those two numbers together, if we have a similar as to last year, you're out of money.
Anything else? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, we have a second, on favor?